If we could start the meeting, bring everything to attention. The, I spoke with Sean earlier today and he said that he had some overlap with meetings and he would be a little late joining us. He expressed confidence in his science presenters to carry on without him. And Alan sent me an email and said he was going to be late as well, so I think we're going to start. So calling the meeting to order, the first thing we need to do is adjustments to the agenda. And we're going to switch the order of the math and the science presentations. Some of our folks doing the science presentation have engagements to which they need to get to and they need to leave a little bit before they would if they were second in the line. So science will be first, then we'll do the math, and then we're going to move Action Matter 7.4, the new course proposals, right after the math presentation so that if we have any questions about the new course proposals, we'll have our math teachers right here. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, we're moving to audience and communications. We have a nice audience here today. Do we have any communications? The, yes?
Hi there. Name's Frank Tora, currently grown and tenured president.
I'm sorry, your name again?
My name's Tora, T-R-O-G, Frank.
Yes.
Here on behalf of Brett Parker. I had attempted to connect with Scott Cameron over the course of the last week to address being put on the agenda. I unfortunately was not able to hear back from him until about two o'clock this afternoon. So we do have a personnel issue that I wish to raise with the school board and would ask that this be done in executive session. And I'll leave it to you to decide whether that's something that can be addressed this evening or put over to a future meeting.
The purpose for audience communications is to provide the general public an opportunity to address the board on matters not on the agenda. We can do this one of two ways. If you would like, we can go very briefly into executive session and you can advise us what the issue is. I have some background on this, so I actually think I know what the issue is. We can also, if it would be acceptable, simply put it on the agenda for the March meeting as a discussion matter and then you and Scott could communicate and Scott could tell me exactly what he wants on the agenda. So I leave it to you.
Well, I think, given the communication Scott and I had today, my preference would be for a brief executive session this evening.
Okay.
I wouldn't need more than just a couple minutes of your time.
Okay, the, then, we need to motion, I'm just thinking, we're working with some timing issues here with our presenters. Frank, is it, are we really going to keep it to two minutes?
Two, possibly three.
Okay, then let's do this right now. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Hello?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we're in executive.
You need to go.
That's right, I'm sorry. I was used to our last meeting. Everyone can stay here, we'll be back in.
David, if you told us how to do this.
Yes, fortunately, I've been reminded that we need to declare ourselves out of the executive session. We are now out of the executive session. There are, I'm assuming, no further audience communications, so if the, if our science presenters could join us, that would be terrific.
Hi everyone, you've seen me before. I've been a variety of roles here on the school board. So tonight is actually my great pleasure to two of our wonderful science teachers who are going to be talking to you about curricular offerings that we have in our science department. At the end of that presentation, we will also be addressing the dissection question, which is also part of the agenda this evening, so we'll get to that after. So without further ado, I'd like to present Nicole Gorman and Mike Barris, who are going to present on the science department.
So, good evening. The first thing I'd like to say is just thank you for the forum for us to showcase all the great things that are happening in the science department. So, the CDU Science Department, we have three words to embody the spirit of what we as science educators are trying to do as our partners at CDU. We look at being systematic, specialized, and authentic. And this is what that looks like at CDU. I'd like to start with our mission statement and bear with me while I read it to you. The CDU graduate will experience a breadth of disciplines within the field of science while developing depth of skill and knowledge critical to science literacy. This graduate will have been given the chance to explore their own interests. I'd like to highlight three things. First of all, I'd like to highlight the issue of breadth of disciplines. We have a very systematic approach to expose students to this wide breadth. At the same time, we, within those, we embed different authentic learning opportunities to build skill and also to build, to help students gain the knowledge necessary for critical thinking, problem solving, and engaging in scientific thinking in general, scientific process and scientific practice. The other piece, and I will talk about, we'll talk about this a little bit when we look at some specific learning opportunities that we guide students through in our curriculum, that we really seek to guide students to pursuing their own interests and helping students really investigate their own questions and their own scientific questions. So how does, how do we do this? How will we fulfill our mission statement? So in sort of in alignment with that, we have three basic objectives. We provide a systematic survey. Mike in a second is going to talk about the three strands that we offer students, how we organize our courses here at CDU, what we ask students or what we require students to take in order to graduate. So a systematic survey of scientific difference, but we offer a wide breadth but very specialized course offerings. This is important because we like to engage all types of learners in authentic learning opportunities. And in order to provide those types of authentic learning opportunities, we really need to offer these types of specialized courses that are sometimes unlike other high schools. The other thing that we seek to engage students in is scientific thinking, scientific practice and scientific process. In order to do that, we need to build into our curriculum the appropriate background knowledge that students are able to think scientifically. And we'll talk about that more in a second. So Mike is going to talk a little bit about, specifically about the strands.
We have a handout coming your way that will make this a little bit easier for you. It's in color also, so. As that's coming around, we break our science curriculum up into three strands, environmental science, life science, and physical science. We've recently expanded the environmental science offerings. We broke apart a standard earth science course into three new courses, weather and climate, natural resources, and astronomy and geology, actually four different courses in an attempt to get a little bit more specialized and offer more depth in a particular content area than we had been, try to cover a lot of stuff. In the course of a semester, we realized what work is well soon, create some courses to allow students to explore their interests more specifically and to go into more depth in those topics. So some of those courses, geology, weather and climate, as I said, natural resources, astronomy, we have a course called Environmental Perspectives Vermont, and a new course called Energy, Power, and, can't read it.
Money.
Oh, money, right, how can I forget? Right, the three. How we source clothes between the three strands. Life science, human biology, zoology, botany, microbiome, BGH, AP biology, so we've got lots of offerings there, and you can bring, you know, plenty of physical science offerings as well. I'll give you a second to check those out.
So, like I said earlier, students are not able to think scientifically unless they're informed with the appropriate content. So we recognize it requires background knowledge. So within our department, we work as, together and also across departments, to try to really build knowledge at a foundational level when they enter in the ninth grade and then dovetail that curriculum in the ninth grade into the upper level sciences. For example, in the life science strand, the core biology teachers work, they teach a survey biology class, there's all kinds of, lots of surveys, not superficial, certainly more in-depth than they've learned in middle school, but a wide breadth of information. That provides the foundation for students as they go into 10th grade, or potentially older, 10th, 11th, or 12th grade, they get a sense of human biology that's more specific, but they use the information that they learn in core biology, building upon that to learn more and more depth, greater depth, when they're exposed to that different curriculum in human biology. And then in 11th and 12th grade, we offer specialized courses to really allow students to gain the specific areas of life science study. For instance, zoology, study of animals, botany, study of plants, microbiology, as well as AP biology. But these teachers within these classes are constantly refining curriculum so that is dovetailed together. And students then aren't missing gaps of information, so when they get all the way to here, that they don't have misunderstandings. And that requires a lot of collegiship within the department.
So, our goal that goes along with our mission is to create as many authentic learning opportunities as we can. And I find that with a lot of these courses, especially the upper level courses, because we don't have tremendous amount of content to cover, we're able to provide more opportunity for authentic learning opportunities. And we've done a lot of cool things, even in the last couple of years throughout our science curriculum, you know, you can read some of these. Why don't you highlight a couple of the life science, I can highlight a couple of the physical science.
So, for example, in zoology, students during their study of entomology, study of insects, they actually do a forensic analysis lab where they look at dating the death of the time and the how an organism dies, with which, what insects are eating it. And they also do, Mark Gitlin teaches botany, and they do a nutritional analysis of lettuce by doing, using a lab technique where they can separate out different chemicals in, or different nutritional molecules in the lettuce. And, you know, shockingly, they find that iceberg lettuce has no nutritional value. And then, both in BGH, which is biotechnology, genetics, and humanity, and then also in AP biology, we do this cool bacterial transformation lab where we take a non-pathogenic strain of E. coli, and then we take the glowing protein, the gene from the bioluminescence jellyfish, and we trans, we subject it to all kinds of blah in the lab, and then we get the E. coli to take up the glow gene, so we make E. coli glow. So it's pretty cool. And then, for instance, Sarah Strack teaches geology, they learn proper technique about how to, they go to some local landforms and they collect rocks and they learn how to use dichotomous keys in the classroom and use different methodologies in the, back in the lab, in the classroom, to identify what those different types of rocks are.
Along with geology, we've connected over the past couple of years with the state geologists, the folks that make the maps they just released. I know it's not exciting for non-geology people, but for geology people, it's actually pretty cool. They just released a new state bedrock map last year, and the woman who was the primary researcher on that works with us quite often, takes us on hikes up Mount Philo and to some of the thrust faults around, and can give us more of an authentic understanding of kind of the history of this area. We did a musical instrument project last semester in a physics class, which was, ended up going very well, and we had some local instrument makers come in and kind of connect physics to art, to music in a very cool way. We've done some DNA fingerprinting. Nicole and I last year, team, sort of team taught a course, a natural resources course, where we did some forest management. This big forest management research project with kids over at Dick Francis's property, he has a sugar stand over there, and had kind of an authentic task for us to do, and we'll show you a map of, that was made during that process. Lots of other cool, authentic opportunities that we've been able to offer, just even in the vicinity of CDU.
And just to highlight, so, within every science course, or many science courses, I shouldn't say every, but certainly at the upperclassman level, we really tried to engage students in some type of independent study. I think we all agree that it's important that when students are driving their own learning, they're more engaged. And so there's, there've been a variety of independent studies. In AP chemistry, after the exam, they do a whole nuclear chemistry poster session style with, doing research in nuclear chemistry. In microbiology, they did this lab where they were, they had to find culture and isolate bacteria from sort of public places, and they, this one student swabbed and isolated the bacteria on the phone in the office and quizzed whether it had dogs. And then someone did the library keyboard, it's unbelievable what they found on those. And then they had to write a paper about it, and they had to learn all the methodology behind that investigation, so. Okay, so, so we're going to talk specifically about each of the strands. What does the life science strand look like for a student at CDU? The students are required to take a credit and a half. They are required to take core biology, which is the survey class worth one credit, and then they also are required to take a half credit of human biology. Above and beyond that, any other credit they take in science in order to graduate from CDU is considered an elective credit. These are the current course offerings within the life science strand. So we have AP biology, biotechnology, genetics and humanity, botany, study of plants, the core science they're required to take, human biology they're required to take, and then there's also microbiology and zoology. Some of the things that, some of the learning opportunities in there, here's a bacterial culture from microbiology. This student investigated the difference in the bacteria present in their left nostril and their right nostril. And then over here, this is a slide of students taking, in AP biology, a lab that we just did, this was the last lab that we did, where students actually digested DNA using special enzymes, cut them all up and measured the fragments, and they actually created their own DNA fingerprint, which is what a picture is right here.
Environmental science, we only require to have credit in environmental science, but one thing that we realize is the science department, as kids, you know, they take, I mean, it's common for a student to take five or six science courses well beyond the credits, so, which is great to see. Again, some of the course offerings in the environmental science strand, this is kind of hard to see, but this is a map, a Google Earth map of the Sugar Bush Management Plan we did, so just one of the products that students produce in natural resources, which is part of the environmental strand. Physical science, again, the textbook courses, AP Chem, AP Physics, Modern Physics, Thayer Model Engineering is a course that we offer fairly regularly. It's an engineering course that a lot of students take and compete during that time in various contests around the region, UVM, things like that. So the things, in the physical science strand, lots of analysis, lots of computer work, this is an example of a project someone did analyzing basketball trajectory with some of the technology that we use and trying to perfect that jump shot, you know? It's a never-ending process, but hey, a little physics can help, why not? So yeah, so we just wanted to leave you with a video we shot today with some of our students, just letting them. One of our primary goals along with our mission statement is just trying to help kids make connections from, you know, within science to other disciplines, and sometimes a lot of students don't feel like they're very good at science. And one of our primary goals is to, you know, help them see how it connects to some things that they are interested in and feel good about. So I just want to share this quick, three-minute video with you, let the kids do the talking. There's always a.
I'm Will Coolem, and last semester I took Phys 2. It was really cool because one of the units was on music and how that all connects to physics. And now in my band class, it all makes sense when Mr. Miskavaj is saying, "Well, do you hear the waves of the distance between the two notes?" I can say, "I can, because I know the different hertz of the different waves," and you can actually find the difference and find the new frequency of the distance, actually. It's really cool for me.
I'm Emma Slater, I'm a junior, and I took natural resources last year. It's actually one of my favorite classes because we did a lot of hands-on work and we're outside all the time and learning how to use really practical tools like the GPS tracking and Google Earth that I still use now. And it really connected to the Green Mountain Conservation Camp that I did earlier and learning about those hunting and conservation laws that they have put in place in Vermont. And I now can understand why they have created those laws and how it impacts the environment.
Can you guys just talk for a second about what your general experience has been like in science courses at CDU?
I've, so far, taken basic, like, introduction to bio, human bio, Chem 1, and now I'm in year one, physics and natural resources. And overall, I really enjoyed it. I feel like the teachers are really easy to understand and available if you need help. I think part of, some of my favorite classes have been the really hands-on stuff like natural resources and chem, being able to do the labs, and it just makes it feel more real and meaningful that you are able to understand what the equations you're working with actually mean. So that's my favorite part.
For me, my favorite part is how it all just makes more sense in everyday life. Like, we learn enough in the science classes that it connects to our everyday life, but if we want to learn more, we can take the higher level ones and really get in-depth with it. So like, taking biology now, when I get sick or something, it's just like, oh, cool, that's how that happened, or just different things in life that are like that.
Do you feel like there's enough variety or there's enough courses to choose from that pique your interest?
I'm running out of time to take all the courses I want. Next year, I've signed up for like, the money, power, energy, and Thayer if it can run, and I'm really excited because there's so many fun courses.
I didn't pay them, I promise, but they're good kids. But it is true, I mean, we do our best to, what's that, oh yeah. Well.
So we'd just like to leave you with the quote, "The guides are teaching," from Albert Einstein, which is, "The only source of knowledge is experience." So thank you for listening.
You don't get to sit down yet. The, before we open it up to questions from the board, the, on our agenda, we understand that you're going to describe to us the current dissection practices in our science programs at CDU.
Yes.
And if you could do that quickly?
Sure, absolutely. I'm just going to read the statement and then Nicole's going to take questions if there are any, okay?
Okay.
So, and I'm reading it just because I want to make sure I get it all right.
Yeah.
So, "The CDU Science Department is committed to engaging students in scientific process, practice, and thinking throughout the school year, including optional dissection in the life science curriculum provides an opportunity for students to experience content as well as develop valuable laboratory skills. Any protocol regarding dissection will follow Vermont State law and CSSU policy. This includes notification of the students and parents in a timely manner, the option for students to opt out and select a suitable alternative assessment, and the right of students to make this choice."
Okay. If I could open it up to the board to some quick questions, we have a few minutes before we need to put the math people on, to ask questions about the presentation and about the section practices here at CDU. Jill?
Robin, can you just state what the policy of CDU and the state law is?
You mean the CSSU policy?
CSSU for dissection, because I remember we had a presentation, I think this question is based on that, so I don't know that off the top of my head.
So, it's pretty lengthy, but the policy is that, in brief, is that, if any kind of dissection will take place, that there needs to be timely notification of students and parents that it's happening, and that all students need to be given the option to opt out if they want to and provided with an alternative assessment that is up to the same academic rigor or the same sort of ideas that dissection would kind of incur, and then the students have the right to sort of make that choice. And that's, that end part there is really what the CSSU policy is and what the Vermont law is. It's Act 154.
My mental option is our policy is the state law.
Yeah, the CSSU policy is the law, yeah.
And our science teachers were asked to look at the virtual dissection?
I'm going to let Nicole take that question. So that's a really, that's a great question, and I am a big fan of virtual labs in general. I use virtual labs, for instance, the DNA fingerprinting lab, students were required to take part in the lab in class, in that learned, authentic learning opportunity, in order to review the lab and get ready for an exam that included that information. They actually, they were, they were given a virtual lab to prepare and to sort of process the information that they experienced in class. I often will use a virtual lab as a pre-lab to prepare students for what they're about to experience in class, so that when they get there, they're ready to go. So in terms of virtual dissection, first of all, I want to make sure that the board understands that there's minimal dissection that happens at CDU. So, that being said, and any minimal dissection that happens is optional. So that being said, virtual dissection is an excellent tool to help students engage in the practice of dissection. It's an excellent tool to help them understand the methodology and the process and practice behind dissection. It is not a substitute for dissection. So, in that way, I agree and I respect the idea that virtual dissection is an excellent teaching tool, not a substitution. Yes.
So what is a student learning by cutting into flesh instead of the virtual tool? Because it seems to me it's just an experience.
Well, okay, so that's an excellent question. So I'd just like to talk a little bit, potentially, or perhaps I could talk a little bit about who is, what, how is it happening in the classroom? Would you like to hear that, or would you like me to address that?
As long as you get to it, it's fine.
Okay.
So I think we all know that it's not being done across the board.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's good. So, for example, in AP Biology, the curriculum is prescribed by the college board, and so from now, from September until May 13th at eight o'clock in the morning, we are asked to teach a particular curriculum. After that, CDU gets to put a stamp and gets to make it personal, what does higher level biology, what does that look like at CDU? So after that, in my classroom, I'm able to allow students to pursue an individual interest. And that's when we, all students engage, they write their own question, they develop their own hypotheses, and then they work with specific methodologies in order to explore whatever it is, the question that they generated on their own. In that particular case, if that question is, includes discovery around anatomy, that might include dissection. But it's optional, students are designing their own question. So for some students, it doesn't have anything to do with dissection. Some students aren't interested in exploring anatomy, some students are. So, you know, whether or not, the question of cutting some, if you tease it out like that, I respect your question, but I guess I can respond to it with an analogy. That my kids love to play FIFA on Wii, you know, it's like a soccer game. And I thought, I taught, I did a lot of coaching when my kids were little, my own children, I have a sixth grader and a ninth grader. And I often thought it would be so great to show them the video game, if feels really real, you're like super moving around, you get sweaty, and to have them, to have them understand where the heck they're supposed to be on the field, because it's so hard for kids to figure out where they're supposed to be. And the Wii is a great tool for that, but it's really not the same as playing in a soccer game. And so that's the way I think about dissection. Everyone has a different opinion and I respect others. That's my feeling as a science educator, that if that helps to engage students in authentic learning, it is authentic methodology, scientific practice. And so we'd like to be able to have the opportunity to expose students that are interested in that, give them that opportunity.
But if I understand correctly, it's not a, it's not a man, it's not a key component of your, it's exploratory for people who are interested. It's not required in order to deliver the education that you need to deliver.
Um, it's not required by the college board.
And it's not required for all your students?
It's not required, absolutely not. It's individual interest, absolutely. Any dissection that happens in any class in the science department is optional. Yeah, and I don't mean to belabor this, it's just that, for me, it's different if
I'm one of 20 kids and we're all going to do this unless you don't want to, and I'm the one kid who says, "I'm not doing it." That's a little different than maybe 17 of the 20 aren't doing it because they're on other things.
Right, but they're all pursuing their own questions and developing their own hypotheses, so it's not like you're doing it, you're opting out and everyone else is doing it. It's not like you're not invited to the birthday party. It's not like you're not invited to the birthday party.
Do we have some other questions on this?
I just have one real quick.
Yeah, sorry.
When you do your dissections, are you getting your animals or whatever you're dissecting from a reputable firm?
Absolutely.
Because there was a letter that we had read by a student.
There's a lot of research around proper care and the way the animals are raised, and all of that goes into the process. In fact, students that are interested in engaging in dissection are actually required as part of their project to learn about that whole process. Because I, life is valuable, that's why I, that's why I'm interested in the study of biology. I agree.
Could you give an example of what an alternative activity that would meet the requirements of the policy would be?
Well, because we're not doing specific anatomical studies, that during the independent study project, students are writing their own questions, and so it's just a more engaged individual inquiry, and if their individual inquiry is anatomy and they're not interested in dissection, we could, truthfully, I'm not sure, students that are not interested in dissection are often not going to engage in that type of an inquiry. If they were, I'm sure there are learning opportunities that would be available for the type of student that was interested in...
Is that the only time that dissection comes into play?
Yes.
In any of the science classes?
I can't say across the board, but yes, I would say.
Okay.
Typically.
The, as we all know, this came up in the fall when we specifically asked that we get a report, when the science teachers gave and told us about their curriculum, we specifically asked for a report on animal dissection. We have, we have a policy in place, it's been reviewed for us, very quickly, in the next couple of minutes before the math folks get up. Is this something that we want to pursue further, or is this something where we've gotten the information we wanted to hear and we're happy with the existing policy?
I'm happy with the existing policy.
Is that, is that our consensus? Yeah, Joe?
Maybe just a question to Sean, or what transpired, so I feel like we looked thoroughly and fairly because of the request in the fall, and...
Nicole?
I got, no, I got, no, I'm sorry. You looked like you were searching for it. I know, I know, thank you. No, we got the information about if it's a student, you know, after the 31st of May or whatever.
Thirteen, at eight o'clock in the morning at St. Jude's.
They do their A and E exam, and then they can pursue, but it seemed like we had heard that there is dissection, so I was just trying to, trying to be clear.
Previous practice was a little different. Previous practice was a little different.
Okay. This is my first-year teaching this class.
There was a, there was a teacher prior to this who had done more of it.
That's the only, I mean, given this explanation, I don't think it raises to the level that we need to pursue it, but I, but I do feel a little bit like we're exposed because we're just saying, given the practice. There's no reason to say we couldn't have a different teacher next year who does it several times during the year, and it's, you know, it's mandatory with the policy, right?
We will always follow the law.
Just speak to that, though, I just want to make sure that you understand that. It isn't part of the AP curriculum. There has been some changes to the biology curriculum, significant changes, and some of the biodiversity and the animal structure and function has been taken out. So, when teachers were carrying out different dissection labs, it was during those chapters, during that section of study, and that section of study is actually not required by the College Board anymore. So, it would be, even if it wasn't me, it would be less likely, less...
I have a great respect for life, animal life, people life, anything life. Usually, my ground rule is, it's got to be valuable in order to bridge that, and...
I 100% agree.
It seems like, it seems like I can respect the kind of teaching staff we have, that that's an issue for the community, and probably not raising to the level of changing it unless new news comes to the board where it's become a problem.
Is there any other thoughts on, on this? The, I apologize for getting us off into dissection. Are there, very quickly, are there any questions about the other 90% of...
Let's go 99.
Of the presentations?
I love the changes with these environmental sciences, I think it really engages kids who may not be classically science-oriented, which, and you have to be science literate these days to get through life, so I love that. I'm just wondering, is there anything that we still think there are gaps that, you know, that we should be considering?
I mean, I think we always, we have a lot of courses on the books that we have a hard time, you know, kids just, there's so many options, they tend to, and as a department, we have a lot of interests, and we can, we can always get more specialized into, you know, these units, and I think there's just, you know, there's no, I mean, there's always more that we could do, I think, at the end of the day, it's how many, how much can we handle kind of thing, and how many students can we, you know, in terms of teacher-student ratio type, type of things. But typically, if a student is interested in seeing a class happen and there's enough interest, we try to make it happen as much as we can.
Does the staff feel that there's a gap, that there's something we're not providing the kids with?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, the breadth, of course, offering is really, to me, I think exemplary. So, and students really appreciate that specificity, but I don't think there's gaps, you know. I mean, I, you know, only time will tell.
I mean, I think some of the examples of bridging some of the gaps from the past would be looking at doing the year-long physics and the year-long chemistry to stay with the same teacher, same kids, continuance, and I think you can get into greater depth when you have the same group for that long. And Money, Energy, and Power, which is combining the social studies and the, and the science. So, and the Perspectives of Vermont, which was also an interdisciplinary course a few years ago that started. So, I think that was, those kind of gaps were recognized, filled, and then the strand work came after that to sort that out, because we wanted to make sure all kids had a piece of each strand. I'd say one of the things that I have heard that would be, when you look at the strands, is, is there a potential for an AP offering in the environmental? I've heard, I've heard kids talk about it, I've heard teachers talk about, there's an AP environmental science course.
That would be cool.
Thank you so much for joining us and presenting this to us. Part of what is really fun about being on the board is hearing about what's going on in the classroom, and it really is kind of exciting hearing about the science program. You've left a lot for the math teachers to top. This is a competition, guys. Thanks again. Just to summarize, the, on the dissection, we're comfortable with the existing policy. We do want Sean to keep us apprised of any differences, any changes in, in course requirements or in the way in which courses are taught if they involve dissection, but otherwise, we're comfortable. Thanks again, and if we could...
Thank you.
Sharon, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for bringing this up for us. If we could have the math presenters, that would be terrific.
We need new technologies, so we'll just...
Do math, do you?
Bring it on.
That's how the UniFix gives.
There's going to be a quiz after this presentation.
Very briefly, we've got Dan Shepherd, and we've got a couple of people from the math department here. Specifically, Ben Epstein is going to talk about the core. The core's been doing a lot of different things in mathematics and with grading and everything else he's going to talk about, and then Mark Poga is going to talk more about some of the 10th or 12th grade things, changes that are happening. And then we will move into some course proposal things right after this, where, you know, we'll also discuss, you know, why we are asking for these courses to be added, but primarily we're looking at the core and all the work that they've been doing in the math world, and then how that's kind of growing up through the 10th or 12th grade courses, and some of the work that we're preparing to do over the next few years in the mathematics world. So, I assume, Ben, you're going to lead off?
Sure, that's fine. Hi, how's everyone? So, I want to also touch briefly on just some of our department initiatives, along with our work in the core, but I think across the board, we have two areas of focus right now. One is beginning to implement the Common Core math practices, and I think is that, some of that information included in what you have in front of you? I think there are eight math practices that might have been included in the executive summary. I'm going to, I'm going to mention some examples that some of my colleagues have prepared some statements, and I'll read those to you in a moment and give you some sense as to what those practices look like. But by and large, the practices describe, in a very broad sense, what a mathematician is, does, and what they behave like. And as teachers, it is our job to try to figure out how do we help students become mathematicians? And then the other area, and this is perhaps more specific to the core, is thinking about how can we implement a standards-based system focused on instruction, assessment, and reporting? And that work sort of grew out of CBU's ESLs, and then we need to think about that down the line in the lens of the Common Core content standards. So, looking ahead, that's, that's a big area of focus for our math department as a whole, because that work has, the discussion has started on the surface, but that work has not gone in-depth yet. So, I'll jump to some statements of my colleagues offered, and then talk a little bit about, about some of my work in the core. So, this is about the math practices, and this teacher writes about precision, the use of precision, and its significance to our work in mathematics. And she writes, "An increased focus on attending to precision by doing things such as separating the precision score from content scores on assessments and requiring students to use more precise vocabulary in class discussions has helped students to communicate mathematically more accurately, as well as form a stronger understanding of math vocabulary. Students are also more aware of the need to be precise by including proper units and notation, not just for the sake of points on a test, but because your answers in math can actually have meaning to other mathematicians." And another, "An increased focus on assessment," so this is speaking a little bit more about what the standards-based system might look like. "An increased focus on assessments that provide feedback for specific skills rather than a single A through F or percentage grade has helped students and teachers develop a better understanding of exactly where students are experiencing success and where they need to revisit information." So, this is happening to varying degrees, thinking about the math practices, thinking about the standards-based approach across the department. Our work in the core, because of our ESL conferences and, and working with students on the transferable skills, it's been a little easier for us to approach this, also in addition to the fact that, you know, we're on a team, and we can collect that information. In terms of the core program, one thing I'd say I'm proud to share is that over the last year, the ninth-grade teachers and some eighth-grade teachers, we've gotten together as a group, we've developed a common algebra final for our district. So, we are, we are near the, the end of finalizing that process, and that, that came out of some work that Molly McClaskey initiated last year. So, I'm proud to say that I was a part of that and that we have something to, to give students at the end of this year, a common final for, for algebra.
Do you give it to the eighth-grader students?
Correct. Yep. Share a little about best practices? Okay. So, in, in the conversation about developing a common algebra final exam, last spring, at a meeting with some eighth-grade teachers, Molly brought up the opportunity for any of us to participate in the best practices in mathematics course. So, I, I found an interest in that and volunteered. So, I took a five-day course over the summer, and then over the next two or three years, and this will be something that we're going to be starting at CBU next year, is participate in what's called studio hours. So, we have, we have a studio teacher, and we go into that teacher's classroom, we have like 15 adults, and for example, the group in Charlotte that I'm working with, we have about 15 adults. We go in in a fifth-grade class with about 12 fifth graders. We terrify the kids, just kind of the student-teacher ratio there, but we go in and all we do is we just listen to students talk about math. And it's a very powerful experience. The focus is about what can we learn from structuring students' discourse about math, and how can we help make that the centerpiece of their work in mathematics? I would like to talk briefly about kind of some specific things that I've learned about being a part of that group, and hopefully, you know, these are things that I'll have the opportunity to continue to work on. But as I mentioned, the discourse is a key component of, of the best practices course. We want to get students talking about their thinking, we want to get students debating the thinking that they hear from their classmates. There, there's a very specific way about going about improving their dialogue, we structure their talk. For example, we might prompt them with, with a question, and we first go and say, suppose that the two of you are partners, we might, we might offer a prompt, we can say, "You have two minutes to think privately about this, and you're going to write about your thinking, and in that two minutes, you also need to be thinking about afterward, I'm going to give you one minute to speak to your partner about what you thought." And then your partner's going to have one minute to speak. And then you might have another minute to work as a team to think, to think about, all right, what did we think that was the same? What did we think that was different? And how can we think about possibly sharing that with the whole group? So, we give them private think time, we structure their talk for them afterwards, and what's been the biggest impact on my, my teaching in the classroom is that that time provides an opportunity for me to observe what students are doing, select ideas that I was anticipating might come out from that discussion, and then have students share that information as opposed to me lecturing and saying, "All right, these are the things that are important that we want you to understand." Now that ideas, those ideas are coming directly from the students. And at first glance, it may seem like, you know, that you might have all these different ideas bouncing around, and it's difficult to manage, and that certainly is a challenge. But you go in thinking, "All right, I'm going to ask this question, I have a very specific response, and I'm looking here, and I need to find the kid who has that idea, and have that person share it with the whole group." So, that becomes sort of the challenge in the class, and it's been a lot of fun, so...
Wait, this is math, right?
Yeah.
If you don't mind me interrupting?
Yeah, go for it.
I want to point out that, this is what I do. I want to point out, Ben and I worked for SummerLink last summer, and he told me about the course that he was taking, and I'm like, buddy, we've got to try this, this sounds fantastic to have kids talking about math and actually genuinely being interested, and it just reinforced the idea that it doesn't matter the level or ability of a math student, they have something to say, they have ideas about it, and if you ask the right questions and build the lessons properly, they'll get the right answers. It was really great, it was very exciting. Therefore, I think all of us, most of the department is working towards the best practices summer...
Yeah, there's, as you've been hearing about it, I'm sure, for years from the K8s, there's another best practice, there's one being offered in March, but there's one being offered in June. We have 14 teachers in the math department, 12 at full-time FTE, but 14 bodies, nine of them will be taking the best, Ben won't be because he's already done it, but nine others will be taking it, so we'll have 10 out of the 14 who will have taken the best practice course by the end of June this year, because it's June 24th through 28th. And then the studio that Ben's talking about, again, hopefully with your support for the in-service days that we've had in the past, that we've, we've structured our in-service days, or that's the tentative plan right now, is to use some of our in-service days next year mathematically to do the studio work that Ben's referring to, where they, what they do is they, the day, we need a studio teacher, my guess is most likely, Ben will be the guinea pig for us next year as far as we go into his classroom, observe him. The day before, he sits down with Bill, Jeeley, or Claire, or whoever's doing it, the people that are teaching the class, they organize the class, how it's going to be taught, something like that, and then he's said, the rest of the math department will come in, observe, watch, listen, learn, and then they go back and they debrief the whole thing, and that's what the afternoon would be, would be the debriefing stuff, and then moving on. And that commitment is three years, so, you know, four to five times a year, because it takes a while to build in these practices. And what ties in nicely is, excuse me, the math practice standards are from the Common Core. That's really about how to teach, not what to teach. Those practice standards are called that practice, it's not the content standard, it's not whether we teach functions in algebra or whether we teach it here, this is the practice standards of, you know, what does a good mathematician do or think about, you know, you critique read, you know, you critique others, you intend to precision, you model, and you do things like that. So, that's how to teach, which ties in perfectly with really what best practices is about is. And that will have a vertical alignment of kids being exposed to similar practices from the Ks up through the high school, as opposed to getting to K8, and then still having great teachers, but having similar languages, similar patterns of behavior in the classroom, there'll be things that they're familiar with, so they'll just walk right in, they'll be used to having questions like that, having private think time, and they know that. So they'll just walk right in, they'll be used to having questions like that, having private think time, and they know that. They'll just continue now. So it would be a nice vertical alignment, which, you know, obviously we've been striving for in, in a lot of areas for a long time. And I applaud Ben for being the first person to want to jump in and, and try that, so.
Ben, can you teach us the best practices class?
So the person I've been working with primarily is Bill Feeley. He's, I've been working with him as a coach, so he's been coaching me.
Is there somebody in the district?
No, so, so Bill Feeley and Claire Early, they work for a group called the Teachers Development Group, and I think they're based out of Portland, Oregon. They live in Vermont, but Molly was able to connect with them, and so they work in a lot of schools around the state.
Yeah, yeah. I'm Mark Pogead. I, it's been a while since you introduced me, so I want to, I want to kind of focus more on the standards-based kind of assessments that, that the upper grades have been working on, to be honest, taking a lot of lead from, from the core, and rather, rather than focusing so much on the practices. I, I brought in, I apologize, only ten examples of just some assessments that I've been offering kids lately. And basically, before I give it to you so that you see what you get, that at the top, there's a table, and it lists out all the skills that I am assessing, whether it's at the end of a unit and the first couple of our unit tests, or during the unit, which we all call quizzes, but, you know, the, a, a more of a formative assessment, telling us what to do next, possibly, things like that. And these skills come directly from the KUDs. The KUDs are know, understand, do, and, and we're getting them from the do's. What, what do we want our kids to be able to do? And that's where we're getting them from. This is very new to me. I've been teaching for math for like seventeen years now, I think, and I, it, to wrap my brain around this is very challenging, but I'm realizing how, how much more it makes sense than just to create a set of, these are not your dollars. That I, to create a quiz or assessment of some sort, and not just say that, "This is the number of points that this qualifies for," or, and, and where does that number come from? I need to have more.
How many of them are B ones? Some B ones?
Obviously, you're missing some B ones. So I, um, in the upper grades, we try our best to work together. We have some common time, and we definitely have been utilizing in services and department time to talk about kind of what people are trying. And taking this from people like Monica Carter and Peter Booth and Karen Niedler, and assessing a quiz or a test differently, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of effort, it takes a lot of readjusting. So for example, the front page is a unit test, a unit three test, where we assessed all of the skills from the, the unit. For a unit test, I actually didn't get a letter grade, as you can see, yet. I got a B. But if you look in the back, the quizzes were not given a letter grade, because I wanted to focus more on the, on the skills themselves, and rather than just the grade. The unit grade is what ends up being the most important thing at the end. But along the way, what skills are we working on? What do you understand? What don't you understand? What can I change to fix that? And then, I guess, at the end, it kind of culminates on something like a unit test where I'm covering everything again for it. Now, what's different for me, and what I've been trying to get my brain wrapped around, is that you can't take an average necessarily with those, with the one, twos, threes, and fours. You can't, because they weigh differently, it depends on how many questions. There's a lot of different variables. So you're really taking a look at it, which is very different, I'm not an English teacher, like an essay. Like what kind of things do I want them to really focus on? And, and what kind of questions am I asking too? It's really, it's giving us chances to really rethink the questions that we ask. If they're based on these skills, then, then this, this question I might throw out completely, completely from a, a, a previous quiz or test, because I realize it doesn't actually address any of the, the skills that I've been wanting to teach. It was a nice problem, you know, it was, it was interesting, but it, it, it's not always necessary. And then I can tweak questions, so that I give kids opportunities to say, "A three is where I want you to be. A four is something that is, takes a lot more analysis, takes a lot more thought, takes a lot more creativity." And, and it forces me to ask those type of questions more often. So I guess, um, it's gonna take some more time for me, to be honest with you, because I think it's, I think when I am able to talk to a student about how they're doing, I can actually talk about specific skills. These things are the things that we need to address, not simply, "Well, you need to study harder, or you need to do more homework." Well, that might be true, but I can actually pinpoint, these are the skills that we're, that we need to focus on. Now either we adjust the class a little bit and, and go a different direction, or we know exactly the type of problems to work on outside of class, or, or during a practice time where, you know, maybe there's some options to, "Okay, what kind of skills do we need to practice today? You guys pick from different boxes, bins, or whatever, you know." And I think the kids are recognizing more what their needs are, what they do understand, what they, what they're doing well. And I really, not that I, it matters, but I like it. I like that, this is the right direction, even though it's still out of my comfort zone. Yeah, yeah.
So, Mark, is that summary table at the top of the first page?
Yeah.
Are those circled numbers, are they kind of ballpark estimates based on the results? Because that's what you're talking about, you're, it's, how do you get to that number? So right now, that's about the chart.
Right, so if, I, I probably should have given a little bit more data. Like the first one that says derive, recognize, manipulate, slope, intercept. How many questions of those did I ask? You know what I mean? Where's the weight on that? And, and did I ask the best questions? Did I ask as many threes and fours as I could? So that does kind, it can be a little bit of a ballpark. In my mind, I think just because I'm a math teacher, I automatically kind of throw an average in there. But then I, I go back and I look at every problem that was on, that, that asked about that skill, and I say, "They were able to do that for a three. They were able to do that. Boy, they made a good jump here. That's a four," you know? So it does end up being a little bit of a ballpark. It doesn't feel as, you know, "Well, just here, let's just take the average." But I think that I know what they need, and I, I think I know what they know much better than just giving a random grade back.
And that grade, the B up here, is that then just based on kind of your traditional grading?
Yeah, and there's been a lot of discussion with that. I, I'm kind of connected to one of the core teachers in the building, and, and she actually has, I'm very twenty. She is something that the core's been working on, kind of a scale. You do have to do letter grade skill still, and, and they've looked at, well, you know, if you get a number of threes, that, that gives you a range between maybe a B plus and an A minus, that, that kind of thing. So that, that part of that is a little, be a little tricky. It makes me a little uncomfortable again, being a math teacher, but I find that the, the, how mu, how often they end up being assessed on skills, the specific skills, I really do know how well they're doing over the course of a unit. And that's kind of where I, I, I end up giving them a grade. So the test grade ends up giving me even more data to say, "Okay, how did you do on a unit, as the whole unit? Here's this piece. Let's look back at your quizzes along the way, and how often did you show me that you really know what, how to perform on the skill, on the certain skill?" I find that they're, I don't wanna say that their grades are better because of it. I don't think it's padding it. I think it's improving because they know what they need to do. It's kind of interesting. I'll might answer that question. Other questions? Because I, I'm long-winded.
Do we have other questions?
The question in my mind is whether we ought to ask Mark back next year to see if he's gained more comfort with.
Well, I'd love to just talk about that a little bit, because I think what you're, what you're hearing from him is, is it, the evolution of our, looking at our assessment practices around the building. And I'll take English, because that's one of the ones that's always started with. It's, it's pretty easy, or it's easier to take a piece of writing and just, and look at, okay, what are the basics of the writing? Does it have a clear thesis statement? Is the purpose clearly articulated? You know, how's the organization of the paper and the gum, you know, grammar, reason, again? Those are kind of the, the standard things that are in. And it doesn't matter whether you're writing about, you know, an English thing, a health thing, a math thing. Writing is writing, and if you have these structures. So our English teachers, I think, were some of the primary ones that got very specific about being intentional with the students to help them understand, "Hey, you know, you do a great job with evidence and analysis, but your thesis statements are a little vague." Or, you know, "You do a great job here, but my God, you, you can't spell, and we need to work on that." It's, we're moving in that direction now, so this intentionality of looking at the paper and looking at it and saying, "These are specific skills, and you really nailed this one. These two over here, you need more work on." And, and giving practice over time on those specific skills, it's obviously content-driven, but it's the skills of manipulating the, the equations, or whatever it happens to be, or drawing lines, or whatever. They're, they're now getting good practice at those. Mark, I observed Mark last week in a, in a class, and he had given a quiz, and we're doing it the way you should. The, the quiz is driving the instruction, so he realized that some kids, there were some holes there. They weren't getting it. So he went back and changed his lesson plan for the next time to allow kids in stations to work around and work on these different skills, to give them more practice, as opposed to most of us, remember, you got a test at the end, you got your grade, and it was too late, you're moving on. So the grade you got, is the grade you got. And you found out at the end that the kids didn't know it. These, these practice and the formative assessment is now allowing kids to know what they know. And the kids know, not just the teacher, but the kids know, because they get that, and, and they're charting how they're doing these skills. So, you know, I think what you're seeing is the growth of us using standards and learning how to assess and, and use formative assessment more effectively, so that our summative assessments, the, the test, the project, the thing at the end, that they now know, and they're doing a better job of that. It also takes away, a lot of times, the grade inflation. You know, you, you did homework. You know, the compliant kid does well. You know, they color nicely within the lines, and they play nicely with others, and they turn it in on time. They're compliant, and so they get a B. They don't know anything, but they get a B. As opposed to a kid who nails it, but turns it in a week late and gets dinged because he or she turned it in late. But they got the contact, they nail it. So that grade inflation of being compliant is gone, because we're not looking at that. We do have habits of learning, which a lot of teachers are using, and that's where deadlines are important, and turning things on time, that, that is a life skill that we need to teach. But it shouldn't be confused with knowing math, or being able to write, or whatever your content area is. So I applaud them, and it is hard for math teachers, because they're very, as you remember last spring, maybe Charlie doing, "It's an eighty-four point six." Or it's an eighty-four, if you want more precision, well, it's an eighty-four point six. They're not gonna want more.
I apologize for.
No, no.
The thesis there. I actually was delighted to hear that you're a little uncomfortable with all of this, because that means we're looking at identifying what our kids need to know and being very intentional about ensuring that they learn it. So do we have, do we have other questions for these folks? The, I, I want you to stay with me for a minute, because we're.
You didn't even take a breath in there.
Gene, you just have to be a lot faster. We have a question.
No, I'm pretty shy about these things. Before we leave math, math is, it's forty-five percent of our kids don't achieve on the kneecaps, you know? So I think this stuff is great, but we got a lot of kids that we have to move forward. So do you wanna talk to that a little bit? I don't see it's going the opposite direction, but somebody wanted?
I, I'll, Jen, I'll say first, uh, you know, it is what it is. I think our hope is certainly that when you get to the S back, that it'll be, you'll see better numbers. Right now, to be honest, the, the system is designed, in my opinion, for failure, because you're asking kids to take a test in the fall that requires Algebra II, when the vast majority of the kids are just starting Algebra II. It'd be different if it was done in the spring of their junior year, when they, for the most part, finished Algebra II, which is a, a big chunk of the test. So I think right there is, is a big reason why a lot of kids are not particularly doing well on the kneecaps, is because the test is given in October of their junior year, and they're just starting Algebra II. Most of them, not all of them.
Yeah, I, I've not, my, my kids who are not passing are not taking Algebra II anyway, you know? The kids who are taking Algebra II are probably at least proficient, you know?
So I mean, I think, hopefully it's gonna, you know, hopefully all the stuff that we're doing at the K eights is gonna improve. It's a systemic thing, where, you know, they're, they're, the, the, the Common Core has tried to take more stuff off the plate of the elementary schools, as far as shifting some things around, taking some things out, trying to get much more fluid in the numbers, in the facts and stuff, in the K fives, and then shifting. To be honest, and you can ask the experts over there, they haven't really taken anything off the plate of the high school teachers, as far as reducing curriculum, trying to take that curriculum from being, you know, a mile wide and this deep, to trying to make it narrower and deeper. They've done a decent job of it at the K eights. So hopefully, as, as the Common Core gets going, and we figure out how to teach to it and, and use it effectively, that, you know, their kids will do better earlier on. We're seeing more and more kids now already taking Algebra I in eighth grade. I think you're gonna continue to see that grow, which means we're having more kids in geometry as freshmen. So I think, you know, the, the shifting down will increase the math skills. I think the best practices, the thing of getting people, you know, kids thinking about math and stuff like that. I think those best practices, along with the practice standards from the Common Core, will get people thinking about it. And so I think our hope is that, you know, the combination of all those with the professional development and the systemic changes that are happening in the K twelve's will improve the scores. But again, I don't have a crystal ball, so.
Can I jump in and just give a plug for the best practices? I think as math teachers, we all recognize that there's, there's some, there's some fear that's associated with, with math, and, and students learning math, and there's a, there's a sense of, either I get this or I don't. And I think one of the focuses of the best practice course is to be very thoughtful about status in your classroom, and who feels like I'm a mathematician, and who feels like I'm not a mathematician. And when you have an opportunity to listen to students talk about their thinking, you have an opportunity to pick the kid that might have low status in the class, and you might hear the idea that you were searching for, and you get to ask that kid, "You know, I, I heard you say this. I wanna make sure that everyone hears this." So hopefully by, you know, just through that class alone, trying to elevate the status of certain students, that, that maybe everyone can start to feel a little more successful in that. And that, that's a big challenge, but I know that's, that's, that's one of the focuses of the course.
I just have a quick question. Is this type of assessment also happening or starting to happen in the K eight schools?
That's a great question. That I don't know. I would assume because of all their Common Core work. I doubt that they're doing just basic letter grades slash number grades. I would think that they're more detailed, even more detailed. I mean, I think K three has always done that, if I, if I remember correctly. So my guess and assumption is that it's, it's working cross-court. I apologize that we don't know. Yeah?
More questions for these guys?
I think it's something, because math is like telling us, but, but, um, I think sometimes we, we're not ready to face up to the fact that for some kids, math needs to be taught every day. I think this every-other-day math thing is, there are some kids that are losing. And, you know, now I just kind of feel like we're gonna wait another three or four years to see if it's just the test. And I just, I feel some, I feel we're letting some kids down. Half the student population down. Maybe only twenty percent of the student population. That's still a lot of kids. And I don't think that it's working, and we're not, I, I appreciate that we're improving the way we teach math. I'm just not sure that, is that really gonna help the kids who are failing at math, so.
Well, we do have a new course coming.
Oh, I was, I was gonna segue into that, because.
And before you start, on math, can you, I should know this, but I don't. So do, do students, the standardized test, like the kneecap, is the expectation that students have gone through Algebra II? To, I mean, you, I know you were talking about the timing, but is there Algebra II content in?
When you, when you look at the data, and I think I have shared this in the past report, students who have taken pre-algebra, algebra, geometry, and Algebra II have about a ninety-five, ninety-seven percent proficiency of getting a three or a four.
Because they're the good math students.
Well, I don't know that it's good necessarily. They've had the content and the instruction.
But there's a reason that they're on that math track, right? They didn't get on their math track by flip of the coin. They did it because they've learned math well through the years.
But it doesn't mean that the kid who takes Algebra II their junior year and then takes trig pre-calc is in a, in a, in a terrible position moving forward.
Right. I totally agree, but I don't think those are the kids who are failing.
Those are the kids that are getting twos. So that's part of your forty-five percent.
So forty-five percent of our kids take Algebra II and as, in their tenth grade year?
No, no, not forty-five. I said it's part of your forty-five.
So the kids that are taking trig pre-calc?
So it's the kids who are also, you know, there's that small, there's that small group, I think, in here. It's typically in the low thirties that are in, come in with pre-algebra. They're definitely getting ones, maybe twos, okay, by the time they're taking, because they will have just finished Algebra, and they're walking into that test. The students who have taken Algebra I and then geometry, and they're walking in, it's kind of fifty-fifty, you know, about whether or not they're gonna get a two or a three.
Really?
But most of them, yeah.
I like to see that data.
We got all that data last year.
And you know what, I never got the answer to my question, which is, I understand that there's a correlation between kids who are in higher math classes getting higher test scores. What I wanted to see is like, how many of those, if you took all those Algebra II ones off the test, does that mean the kid has to fail? I mean, it just, I could see that being the difference between the top score and the week three, but I just, I just don't, I think we're using it as an excuse, that's all.
But what I'm, what I'm hearing from the data that we had last year, and I'll fish it out for you again, Gene, in seventy, that's if I can actually find it. And from the CSSU is that what we're looking to do is to, is to get kids so that they're entering CBU at a higher level in their math, and then we get a hold of them, and using some intentional instruction can bring them on. So while, whereas I share your concern about the high number who are scoring ones and twos, what I do hear overall is that we are trying to take steps to address it.
Well, we've been taking steps to address it for ten years, that I know of, and we still have forty-five percent of the kids. Or even, let's just talk about the twenty-two percent who are completely failing.
Yeah.
It seems to me it's a problem with the assessment tests, the content, the specific content, not just really good in math, but when you know Algebra II.
But see, that's what I don't think it is. I think you could fail every Algebra II question and still, I was getting mixed up. And still pass, right? That's what I think is true.
What's fail? Two point five.
But whatever the line, line is here, you know, I'm just saying, I don't care.
I mean, I don't want, I'm not, do you know that for a fact?
No, I have the noise, because no one will be able to give me the data.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't agree with that. My understanding, I'm not
Can't we find this out?
Skillful enough on that test? My under, I would think so. My understanding is that a large proportion of that test is Algebra II skill-based. And so a kid that hasn't had Algebra II is going to struggle, they're most likely not going to pass. But I don't have that data. I can try to find out the numbers of what percentages of the questions are Algebra II related or higher, that sort of thing. I can try, I don't know how guarded they keep this stuff, whether I can get that, but I'll certainly look. I think that's a fair question.
That's making more questions with the time.
It's going away.
That's true, too.
It's happened seventy-five years, right?
Well, the next test is totally different. It's based on, it's much more linked into how students are performing, so the test adjusts itself to the skill level of the student, as compared to it being the same test for everyone. It has, it starts them at a certain level that's common, but then it makes adjustments as the students are taking the test, so that they can be successful, so they feel fifty, I think they structure their first fifty percent success rate or something. So the, so the kids who may often, with the current test, just have gotten wrong answer after wrong answer, and kind of given up because they do poorly, it's trying to guard against that, and to give them more, you know, more sense of persistence and ability, you know, capability, so that they'll develop their skills that way. And you get a much truer picture of what they know and don't know, because the items are easier to analyze in that way, I think. Am I right?
Yes, we have not seen the test.
Yes.
But that's
But that's the intention of the test.
That's how they describe it. If you start out at a midpoint in the class, if you answer them right, they give you harder questions, and if you answer them wrong, they go down that way. So it's a computer-generated
Totally, it's computer-based, so that it's all, it's supposed to be programmed into the way that you're
But I guess I get my point, is I don't want to wait five years and find out, oops, that didn't help. Because that's a whole bunch more kids that were failing. So I would, if we could figure out that we're addressing it more quickly, that'd be great.
But I think what I hear is they're aligning the curriculum to the common core, the new test is going to support this alignment. I mean, that's, it's all going in this direction, so it will take a couple of years, but I think we should be able to see the results because of the test and the way the curriculum is aligned.
This will fit into our three-year session, because it will be, going through the curriculum again in three years, and you'll still be here, Gene, so. Well, know exactly where we are. If you don't mind, I think we could, we could spend till nine chatting about this, and this really is the most fun of what we get to do, is to think about this stuff. Yeah, and before I cut us off completely, Susan, Heather.
Just a quick, so, we don't require our students to get through Algebra II to graduate.
No, three-credit, three-credit, we have a three-credit math requirement.
This is three-credit now.
Which, you know, again, Armando Velaseca has suggested that that might be a goal, you know, to try and have every kid graduate with Algebra II. You know, I think it's, it's laudable, and, you know, it certainly, it's nice having North Styris on the sheet at, but in the segue to Mark was talking about, we have tried to look at our course offerings and cater to student needs, and as a result of that, the two course proposals that are in front of you, starting at the Algebra I first, the idea that we're having kids coming in with Algebra, you know, a lot of times with the low skills, so they would take pre-algebra as a freshman, and then maybe not be ready for Algebra I as a sophomore. And so back, I don't know how many years ago, they were called novice courses, they created what was called the Math ofs, Math of Games and Science, Math of Finance, Math of Sports, and Math of Something Else.
Shep is doing the very nice segue that we needed, right into Action Matter seven point four, which is the new course proposals. And in order to get Shep and these guys to explain it to us a little, I take a motion and a second to approve the new course proposals.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oops.
Discussion.
I will, I will in trying to move on.
Move on.
We'll now, we'll now have the discussion. Shep, if you could tell us what it is that you're asking us to do.
So, in the Algebra I, like I say, many times students would come in with a pre-algebra back in freshman year, and then didn't think they were skilled enough, or kind of you're confident enough, I think that's a lot of it is, if you have confidence that you can do this, do you have the persistence to continue to try and plow through this and stick with it? So the Math ofs were created, I don't know, how many, a long time ago.
About ten years ago, eleven years ago.
So, but with, again, with the emphasis of trying to get to Algebra II, to be honest, from a college perspective, the Math ofs weren't even accepted. Most colleges, you know, would die of the transcript and didn't even consider it math. So Mark and a couple other teachers got together and basically came up with a proposal to offer a two-year Algebra I. So it'd be cleverly called Algebra I Part One and Algebra I Part Two.
Came up with that.
Very clever.
Yeah, he was up all night thinking.
That's all I did, actually.
So the idea, so there's a couple of different pathways, if you will, for a student that comes in, in a pre-algebra for freshman year. If, at the end of that freshman year, they've had some success, and they're feeling confident and ready to go into regular Algebra I, they could take in Algebra I, which would be the equivalent of what the eighth graders are taking at the sending schools, or the core students are taking as ninth graders, it's Algebra I, you know, we have level ones and twos in all the other classes, it would be the equivalent of an Algebra I Level One. So the kid that comes through as pre-algebra, but's had a good year, has built on those skills, and now has the content and the skill knowledge, could take just a regular Algebra I. So we offer that right now. Mark's teaching one section of that, and Chris Hood has been teaching a section of that. So that would still continue. This would, however, provide an opportunity for a kid who wasn't quite ready for that, that needed more work to take less content for the year, to develop those skills. And then junior year, take Algebra I Part Two, so they get Algebra I on their transcript, they learn those skills, and then if they chose, hopefully they've had success along the way, now as a senior, they've got their three-year requirements amassed, so they'd be done, but they'd be in a position to, for whatever reason, I've never been able to get an answer for this, we always seem to go Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, and I can't find anybody to tell me why, but I did it when I was in high school, and I think probably everybody sitting here did too. But everybody says we should do that, but I don't know why, but my feeling is when a kid, this, you know, person takes Algebra I Part One as a sophomore, Algebra I Part II as a junior, as a senior, if they wanted to take something, my feeling is either Geometry or Algebra II. I don't see that there's anything magic about taking Geometry before Algebra II, but that would allow them to have that flexibility where they could get Algebra II before they walk, walk out here, or at least at Geometry, but they've got a good, solid foundational knowledge of the skills and background behind the Algebra I. So if you want to speak to that, Mark, you can kind of create it.
Yeah, the, the Math ofs were a great idea at the time, but we realized that we were not meeting every kid's needs to then move on to continue taking math. We're also talking about a very small percentage, I just want to point that out, it's a very small percentage of kids that would be taking these courses, a dozen, fifteen, you know what I mean? It's a small group. And basically, Shep addressed that there was a concern on their transcripts. These kids are college-bound, and when those colleges look and they say Math of, I don't know what that is, oh, but, you know, it's got a lot of the algebra, it's got a lot of geometries, all the things that we normally, it didn't matter to colleges, it was hard, it was a hard sell. So guidance talked to us a lot about that, and of course, we agreed. And we thought that they still needed this time. Often, in my opinion, kids will be able to learn all the math that we're concerned with. It just sometimes takes a little bit longer for different kids. So we said, let's take our Algebra I curriculum and spread it across two, two years. Now that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to split it into two halves, it just means that we're going to hit the skills quite a bit, more often. Similar to the idea of kids taking math every day, they're doing math a little bit more repetitive, it's still every other day in our structure, but it's a little bit more repetitive, it comes back, in the sense, spirals, is a term we used about ten years ago quite a bit, it'll come back often, depending on different subjects. We get to throw in other things, like geometry and Algebra II pieces, because we have that time to do the things that we need to do. And we're not necessarily saying that this is the end-all, be-all, this will work perfectly, but we feel like this is a nice transition from the Math ofs to allow these kids to have as much algebra skills as possible. I just lost it, there was something else I wanted to say. Oh, I know, we believe that it will also promote more math for these kids to take, because before, they would take pre-algebra, take the Math ofs, and if they needed to, they sometimes took it for a year, sometimes they took it for two years, and then the idea was that maybe their senior year, they would go into the next logical step. Well, that logical step was often Algebra I. Seniors don't want to take Algebra I, not with freshmen, you know? So now we give these kids the opportunity to be taking upper-level math courses after they've worked on their skills. We believe, and we hope it works, that not only will they get their three-credit requirements for math, that they will often go for the fourth, because colleges are looking for it as well, and we hope that they're more confident with their abilities. You were going to say something?
I was curious, I guess, there's an old term that pre means never, but anyway, what I am wondering about is whether that, do they really need three years, or whether pre-algebra gets, gets rolled in somehow to the algebra, the two-year algebra program? I think I'm a little concerned about three years of algebra, and having them have to hang all the way till their junior year. You're going to be pretty persistent to be addressing those skills for that long period of time, and I, so I was just wondering, is two years sufficient, or do they really need three, including the pre-algebra?
They could definitely offer Algebra I Level Two.
This, right.
So this would sort of be like that?
That would be sort of that Level Two piece, you're right. So rather than taking out Level Two in our school, often removes course, or courses, removes units and topics, because we believe that they'll be filled in later. So a lot of Level Two kids will go from algebra to geometry Level Two, to Algebra II Level Two, and then they'll go to advanced trig pre-calc, which is not trigonometry, excuse me, advanced trig, which is not trig pre-calc, because we take out units. This way, we're hoping that we're not taking out any units, in fact, we're adding more a little bit, so that they're getting a little bit more. I understand your concern, because pre-algebra is algebra, but at that time, and you can maybe talk to this a little bit, we're still working on those basic skills to be successful with Algebra II. But I do know that in conversations with the core, and with some middle school teachers, that the goal is to do significantly more algebra, that maybe this is not something that is, we do for ten years. Maybe we do it for five years, you know what I mean? Because there's so many things, I feel like we needed to make, not just me, a lot of people felt like we needed to make an adjustment. And whether it's temporary or not, we don't know, I don't want to, I don't want to put that on there, but we want to address things right now, because these kids belong in college, and these kids deserve a more straightforward Algebra I course, I guess. But I definitely hear your concern.
Can we have someone very briefly tell us about the proposal for calculus? And we got background material.
Yeah, the calculus course was, I took over the math department a year or two ago from Sean, and as I started to figure out the department a little bit, to me, it was the, you know, the kids that are on that track, so they, you know, a lot of kids would come in, take geometry as a freshman, take Algebra II as a sophomore, trig pre-calc as a junior, and then as a senior, they're only, they had two options, AP Statistics, which was mislabeled, it used to be called Inter or Prop Stats, and then AP Stats, but in reality, it was an AP course the whole time, it was just kind of misnamed. So we have now fixed that, it's now AP Statistics or AP Calculus. So now you've got a kid who's a pretty good math student, that a lot of times is applying to, you know, selective colleges, that needs four years of math, they've taken trig pre-calc, they now get into AP Calc, and they're like, wow, AP Calc. We had no fallback position for those kids. We had a group of kids that, if they weren't in AP Calc, now all of a sudden they're a senior, and they're out of math. So it just, there was a gap there. I don't think we were serving our students well. So now the idea is to propose just a straight calculus. They still have AP Calc, we think the numbers will work out, we think there'll be students who will just take a regular calculus course without the AP portion of it, you know, and there'll still be, our guess is right now, we're offering three sections of AP Calculus, the estimates from talking to the teachers and talking to kids, and just trying to get a sense for, you know, if you had this option, what would you do? What would you have done? Is that we'll probably have two APs and a straight calculus, so we can approve it. But the idea is that it, for the first, up to about interims, for the first month, AP Calc and the calculus are going to teach similar things, so that if a kid, very seldom you have a kid probably want to go from a calculus to an AP, but they could. More likely, it's going to have a kid going from an AP calc that's deciding, wow, maybe I'm in over my head, I wasn't sure if I wanted to do it, and I'm over my head. So they'll have a fallback position to take calculus as a senior. So the first month, the teachers are going to kind of do similar things, although the calculus course was created to be taught a different way, more of a discovery method, and I can't tell you, to be honest, the details of it, you have to, you have to get to, you know, Charlie and Peter Booth and Allison Gold, who created the course for it. But that's the idea, is that, in our opinion as a department, we really, there was a hole there, talk about gaps, there was a gap there, in our opinion, for our students' needs, because a kid, I say, the kid that gets in, because you can't really go from AP Calc to AP Prop Stats. AP Statistics are just totally different, and so you were, we had a bunch of kids that were really struggling, and no place to go.
Do we have a discussion on this before we go?
I was just going to ask you, so the difference between the AP and the non-AP is, I was going to, I was assuming it would just take content out, but it also sounds like it's delivered in a different way?
It's, the theory was it was going to be designed to be delivered differently, yes, and then obviously, the AP has to follow the College Board, so it's very prescribed, as far as what they have to do, and it's like this. And so it's almost like the old days, you know, a lot of times what we grew up with, you know, I'm teaching, you hang on, if you don't get it too bad. And that's kind of, at times, what AP becomes, because you have to have this ready for May thirteenth at eight AM, or whatever it happens to be. So the idea is that there will be less content, and a different style of presenting it, yeah.
Anybody else want to? We ready for a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? The ayes have it, we've approved two new courses and thank you folks very much. This is wonderful.
I want to thank these gentlemen for giving up their time to come here. The math department, you know, a lot of times they're kind of, the big men of our imagination. Math teachers are doing some great stuff here, they are working hard at it, and it is tough changing practice, you know? A lot of times, we tend to teach the way we were taught and/or coached the way we were coached. And so, you know, for these guys, as he said, it's difficult, but it shows growth in their part and it takes guts. And it's hard work and it's messy, but they're doing a great job department-wide, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mark Sumpf, how are you?
You lost your.
We're moving on to reports to the board and Zach has been hanging with us all this time. I want you to know that Zach raced an Alpine ski race today, took a third. I'm not sure whether he got food on the way here, then came and he still has homework. So without more ado, give us your student council report and then you can head out and do your homework.
Well, right now, the student council is working on Winter Carnival, which is next Friday. It's always the Friday before break where we propose to the administration to get a half-day for that day so students only have classes for half the day and then we do a bunch of fun activities and then have the trike race and different classes have dances. So that'll be a lot of fun. So that's kind of what student council's putting their efforts right now. And then also, the blood drive is coming up in March, actually on March 8th, which is my birthday as well.
Eighteen.
Yep. So a lot of effort's been going to that. We're going to try and make it our biggest drive yet. I think last year, we had 96 pints donated, I'm pretty sure, and that was with some flaws, both on our part and the Red Crosses, so we're going to try and increase that count. And then in terms of sports, our hockey team, guys hockey team is doing very well and I'm pretty sure the girls hockey team is also. Alpine had a race today, as David said, and CVU cleaned up. Granted, we had, I think, as much students as all the other teams combined. And then also, actually, what I wanted to bring to the board is, I know you.
Girls' basketball, don't forget.
Girls' basketball and guys' basketball also. Been having good seasons. Girls are undefeated. So the Vermont Interest Classic Council, which is the council that I've created, and it's had a lot of positive support and actually, two weeks ago or whenever January 31st was, we had a very interesting meeting where actually Jeanette White, I'm not sure if Joan, you know her, she's one of the state senators, came to our meeting and talked to us about a bill she is trying to pass and it has to do with student free speech. And I guess she's proposed it three times, I think, to the Senate, but it's never actually made it out of committee. So she came to us looking for student support and actually wanted us to come to our school boards and talk to our legislators around, to get their idea on it. And it's an interesting bill because I don't, I think it kind of tackles a problem that I don't think CVU really has a problem with. Sean, have you ever had to censor any student publications or assemblies?
Yes, but very rarely.
Very rarely.
Yeah, and it's usually more an issue of, let's talk about how this is going to play out. It's something that a student hasn't really thought, so it's a learning piece opposed to a censoring.
Exactly. Which is, I think, actually what she wants to do with the bill is just kind of be able to, you know, if it's still going to hurt, say, another student, it still shouldn't be allowed to be printed, but she feels everything else should. So I was actually just kind of wondering what your guys' opinion on student free speech is in terms of publications and right to assembly. Because if I have your support, she wants to get this bill passed and I think it's interesting, I think it's just, because again, I don't think it actually has too much credibility here because we haven't had that problem, but I think it's just important, in fact, of it being there in the state to set a precedent.
Did she talk about examples where it had been?
Um, yeah, I think it was, actually, she said mainly Brattleboro seems to keep running into problems with it. And what was actually one of the ones where she came up, where I was curious how it would play into CVU is students approached the administration about talking about the use of medical marijuana and like people who want to debate in a public assembly of, you know, the pros and cons of it and the legalization, how it's been happening in states, and the school just shut that down completely without even the debate. So that was really the only example she could give us, but again, and I know with drugs in school, it's a touchy subject, but I think it's definitely, it was just, first of all, cool for my council to be working with a state senator, but I think I would like to, you know, maybe work with her a little bit and see if we can get this bill passed or at least get it talking a little more.
I was going to say, it might be good if there was a copy of what she's proposed in the past that we could distribute to the board for next meeting and they could give you some input on that to take back.
That's, if you get that to us, Zach, I'd be happy to put it on as a discussion item.
Okay.
I don't know what the timing will be, but just get that to me and we'll put it on as a discussion item.
Cool.
Let you get feedback.
Awesome.
Okay?
Does it even have a number yet?
It does, and she gave us the bill, so I have a copy and I can just scan it in.
She had spoken briefly that she went to MMU. She didn't say she'd come here.
Was the meeting at MMU? It was at MMU, that's why.
Ah.
Yep, it's actually, the meeting travels from.
Yeah, she was very excited.
Does she represent Brattleboro?
Yeah, Wyndham County, I think she said.
Any questions for Zach?
She just.
Well, Zach, thank you for bearing this.
No problem, it's all right, I am.
Get out of here. The next item is principals' report. And I turn it over to you, Sean.
All right. I have a few things to add and then if people have questions or comments about the report, I'll give David and he can pass it around. This is a thank you card from the Environmental Action Club to the board for supporting the lighting retrofit and continuing to support green initiatives at CVU. A couple of other items that came out recently before, or after the report, after the report was submitted. February 7th, our Future Business Leaders of America team won the State Life Smarts competition, the third year that we've won it. And so students were Chris Patrilla, Roshi Brooklyn, Sam Giles, Graham Holby and Devon Cantor. And they will be heading to Atlanta, Georgia in April to compete in the national competition. And for those of you that, Life Smarts is sponsored by the National Consumers League. There's five categories in which they're quizzed in, personal finance, consumer rights, health and safety, the environment and technology. Also, very proud to announce that Carolyn Braun from Charlotte, a junior, she won Senator Bernie Sanders' State of the Union Essay Contest. And so we've had numbers and numbers of students since this started, probably three, four years ago, but we have not had a winner before. And so this is our first winner and we had several finalists as well. So that was very exciting and we had set up a phone call with Senator Sanders on Friday, unfortunately, to surprise Cali about this and so we gave her the information another way, but it's very nice of Senator Sanders and his office to facilitate this contest for kids. So she will move forward then into a national pool. And I'll pass the, if you want to take a look at the winning essays, there's a link that you can look at. And finally, I have information of a resignation for you from science teacher Gay Craig. So Gay Craig has been at CVU for 21 years, primarily in the, as the Nichols Core Science Teacher, and was teaching for additional 14 years before she arrived at CVU. And she has very mixed emotions about this and she would like to call it a resignation and not a retirement because she would still like to work, but there are other things in her life that she feels are important that she needs to tend to. And so just a portion of her letter that I'd like to read to you, she says, "I've been very privileged to be a part of the CVU community. It has been a wonderful experience working with and learning from the students, administrators, staff and my colleagues in our CSS community, and I will miss everyone very much. I will especially miss the Core Program and being part of the initiatives that focus on improving the learning and transition time for ninth grade students. CVU has been a perfect place for me to teach and learn and I appreciate having had the opportunity to be a part of a community dedicated to the young people I so much enjoy." So those of you that know Gay, should know she is an outstanding science teacher, loves kids and has been a real leader in that Nichols Core team for many, many years. And so we thank her for her service and we'll be congratulating her in many ways as we move through the end of this school year.
Did she also sub in land?
She did. That's right. Absolutely.
Are there, am I jumping in too quickly?
No, I, if there was any questions or comments about the report.
Has Dave Dooey agreed student?
Pardon?
Has Dave Dooey agreed?
I think he was the best speaker we've had from the board. He didn't throw T-shirts into the crowd or anything.
That was ridiculous.
It's funny, I took a survey, it said exactly that.
I bet it did.
No, I think it went really well and like I mentioned, it was, it was nice to have, we had teachers outside the Core for the first time and I think that was nice to have language teachers, unified arts teachers, talking to the parents about those offerings. So hopefully, we'll continue with that practice in the future. And we also had two students who got up in front of that whole group and talked. One of them was the same one in the video in Science, Will Coulum, and he showed the robotic car that they made for the UVM Task Engineering. And then another young lady, Forrester, who, she talked about the work that she did, photography and smiles for her Holocaust and Human Behavior class. So it was great.
They did great jobs. It was, it was great fun seeing that robotic car flying around. The only, my only disappointment was that Will didn't leave the controller for when I got up to speak.
That's pretty impressive, the thing with the plug too, I have to say. Oh, holy cow.
Yeah. Forty, yeah, 28,000 bucks? Whoa.
Yeah.
And when we were in the staging tent, the CVU kids out yelled absolutely everyone within half a mile. It was great to listen to. Item 5.3, the financial management report.
So I'll just, I was actually happy wearing a greater, to freshman next year, first year next year, and I will echo everything that was said and all the parents that I've talked to loved it. And I think even though the presentations were excellent and the board chair's presentation was excellent, people loved the presentations in the house and the ability to ask questions. And, you know, we happened to be in the house with Dan Shepherdson and that crew, which was, was very good, but the students were equally impressive as well. It really, it showed off the school that I think we all, we all know and people are really confident about sending their children here. We should be equally confident about our budget this year. So I will be very quick because I know we're running a little, little late. So if you're looking on the first, first page here, if you look towards the bottom and the, in the center, under the column, projected fiscal total, you'll see at the very bottom a sign that says, or numbers that say versus budget, showing 312, almost 313,000. That is how far we are favorable to budget at, at this point in time. If we use our, that's if we use our full carryover. If we do not use our cash carryover this year, which we had budgeted at 100,000, we would still be favorable by 212,000 this year. It is equally being, that positive variance is being equally made up on both the revenue and the expense side, so very solid performance this year. And I embarrassed to say, my notes on what we're doing positively are actually sitting conveniently on my desk at home. So if you have specific questions, I know a lot of it on the expense side is having to do with some favorable benefit selections this year. It'll look like we're, we're doing very well in terms of revenue for our special education program, but that's also being offset by some expenses on the special education program. So it's sort of neutral out. Any specific questions?
Keep up the good work, Alan.
For another what? Yeah, I was going to say, we're definitely going to miss you, Alan.
Turning, turning the page, we've got the food service, food service summary. We are showing about a breakeven through December, projecting to be negative. As you can see from the very bottom line, we're, we have a favorable fund balance of about 43,000 in food service. We can absorb a fairly significant negative bottom line and in fact, we might want to lower that balance a little bit, so.
Well, it is kind of by design, right? We've been trying to get them to lower that balance.
This is where we're doing good on that. And then Bob, I'm going to have to rely on you on the capital numbers. I think the only change is that we finished the payments on the roof project.
Yeah, I think the only thing I did was I adjusted a little bit of the interest and changed anticipated expenses to real expenses. It hasn't changed much since your last issue. You'll have 113,000 available for application to other projects. At your budget, your budget work, you indicated you wanted some of that to be used for the larger projects within the list that Kurt reviewed for you, so he is working on getting them at some point in time in the next two or three months towards you for review and approval. And you're in good shape.
I remember that 113, so that, you did all that work, it was 113.
Yep.
CSSU debrief, if Dean or Joan want to very quickly summarize it, it was a pretty quick.
Actually, I guess the only thing I was kind of, when I was looking at it was just for the, sort of the ad hoc committees that are going, there's a bunch of committees that are actually doing pretty interesting work at the CSSU level right now. There's Food Service Committee, which sounds a little bit like they don't really know what their purpose is, but I guess they're narrowing it, we'll follow you on that one, right?
It's very interesting. I mean, we'll, we're going to get more of a direction in our next meeting, but we are going to tour each of the cafeterias and have lunch there.
Wow. There's some Bennys in that.
So that's going on, there's the Outcomes Committee and we put together outcomes and I guess administration's now working on indicators and there'll be another kind of do loop on that, the whole thing. And then the negotiations, actually interesting, they're getting together, right now it's a, Lauren, are you on this one, right? So it's a, it's a very small group of people who are working with a very small group from the, the union to, to figure out how to move forward. And it sounds to me, you could probably explain it by the short term, be, between now and the summer, kind of working out ground rules and calendars and, do you want to say something more on there?
Yeah, I do. We met three times and we'll continue once more. I'm sorry, I can't talk anymore. We're talking about having training that we've had both board members and union members tend to see in training. Talking about having a timeframe in advance so we don't have some of the mess of, of meeting in those months and months and then things go on for two years. Communication plan so that we know what, exactly how we're going to communicate either between ourselves or between ourselves and the media and the community and constituents and whoever. And then we talked about the size of the negotiation team that will actually be the negotiators. And that's one thing I thought I'd warn you in advance because I think we're going to recommend as a committee that the team be a lot smaller than last year or two years ago when that met. We literally had one representative from CVU and one representative from each of the other schools. That will give us a group of about 12, we think that's workable, unlike 24, 25 people that came from the table and that was frankly nuts. Nobody thought that was very effective. So there'll be one person there for CVU and then we'll be on the negotiating team if you approve the recommendation of the group rather than two. So it won't be different. And it's good, it's, I feel like we're, we're actually relating well. It's a good time to, now, before you start negotiations, actually get to know people, talk to them and, you know, realize that, oh, you know, we're really moving also and so are they.
Good to hear.
Something that, like I said, the type of question is, I thought one reason we're doing all this is to try to get to some issues around negotiations that just aren't money, but some, it's a real.
Well, there's two other committees. One of them is the seniority and the RIF committee, and the other one is Work Day, I think it's Schedule Committee. So that's sort of going to talk about those kinds of issues. And I think between those two and what we're trying to do is make the process reasonable and not as painful as last time. It really, you know, I sort of blocked out my memory of some of the things, but then I remembered the postcards, right? There's that kind of pressure at one point. It is, it is not pleasant. So they don't want to do that either again.
Well, good, I'm glad.
Yeah, it's good.
Glad it's got set up to do it ahead of time.
Yeah, so think about how your Tuesdays look because the person that represents us will probably have to commit a number of Tuesday nights. Or we're trying for that, might not work.
And that person has to be fairly vocal because I think one thing we kind of ran into last time we got through this was, I don't want to state this because, we had, it's got to take a lot of communication. I mean, it used to be that the board would do the negotiation with its union in the classroom, you know, the, each board would do it separately. Now we do it all together, so instead of having several people who are, have a vested interest, having their voice and hearing the issues, we're really coming down to trusting one, one of us, right?
Yeah, that's right, and I think it's really important to have one person that you put a lot of trust in.
Right, but last year, we kind of came to a situation of saying, you know, we kind of went the other way as the other boards at some point and it was noticed by the other boards. So the communication back and forth has got to be very, very strong or we'll just end up kind of in a mess again.
And we'll hear more of this as it develops over the spring.
We'll have another meeting next week, we'll be in specific, like, negotiations.
And we need, we need to pick the.
About the, you know, about the process.
So we need to pick our rep, the next meeting?
Yeah, I think so.
The, yes, you're right, the March meeting.
Friday, May 31st is the scheduled. Friday, May thirty-first is the scheduled retreat date.
Yeah, I think, actually, that's on our action matters as well. So, anything more on the CSSU meeting? The, let's move on to committee reports. Finance Committee, have anything to add to our lovely access to budget number?
Yeah.
The Facilities Committee, any updates?
We had a meeting, we had a meeting on Monday with two people, two women, that are gonna be in charge of the fundraising for.
Amy DeBrul and Kelly Austin.
Fundraising for the turf fields.
Who, who is in charge?
Amy DeBrul and Kelly Austin.
Good.
And they're looking to have each community on their team, so that, that they'll set up a contact person for each of the communities, but they tapped into Sarah Tischler's experience with fundraising, my experience with fundraising, lots of energy with them, and it was, it was a good meeting. And, and it, if things progress, it, it looks like our fiftieth CBU reunion alumni big event will coincide with the fields being ready. And we had already picked Spirit Day to have that fiftieth anniversary.
The other thing that came, I can't remember if it was Monday or the meeting from last week, is is the timeline of the turf fields is now, you know, for two thousand and fourteen. And, you know, at some point, people thought that they would be able to get them in by this fall, but no. Not gonna happen.
The, we have other committees, are there other committees that want to pass on any information at this moment? Then.
The Communication.
Communic.
Oh, no, that's for the town meeting stuff.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be there very shortly. So, I think we're done with committee reports, and let's move to discussion matters. I love item six point one, because there's absolutely nothing to do, and we can check that right off. And then, prepare for the budget meeting, and we can hear about, yes, the annual budget meeting and the town meeting, and we can hear about our flyers.
I have a case of flyers here, and I intend to go home without them. Please, take a quantity for your town meeting before you leave. I know a number of you saw these before the meeting, but I will just send them around. Major, major kudos to Lorna and Jean, who essentially wrote everything. I just collected the pieces. Did you take one?
Yeah.
Okay. So, these are going to be in the February twenty-first stuff, you know, into the inserts, stuffed in the middle. February twenty-first, Shelburne News and Williston Observer. February twenty-eighth, Charlotte News and Heinsberg Record. And we should each have a quantity to have on the table in our respective town meetings. The, well, you can see, the cover article talks about the budget, as we finally did get it approved. The article that threw the middle talks about the achievement gap and some of the efforts that CBU is undertaking to address that. And then, the sort of boilerplate property tax and the articles on the back page.
Thank you all who did this.
This was a whirlwind.
Well, this is, this is just, it's tremendous for our budget, and it's tremendous for getting word, word out about CBU. And I, I love the, the stuff that I skimmed through in terms of letting folks know what's going on at CBU.
Susan is underestimating her, under, she did a lot of work to put this together. Lorna, I sent her files, and she put it together, so thank you very much, Susan.
You know, it's, it's not a lot of information that you just glaze over.
Right.
So, I think, I think it looks good.
I think it's, it's great.
The major areas of budget changes is huge.
Yep, and it stands out nicely.
I highlighted well, two negatives in there, and we got positives, and, yeah.
So, please, there's about a hundred for each town.
Yeah, no one leaves, no one leaves without some of these to take their town meeting.
At least one for each town.
And, and again, thank you, this is just, this is tremendous. The, and I think Jean passed around a servant.
So, I literally moved together last night, so I am not, I'm open to suggestions on these. I've had like two empty spots that I, you know, something about school choice, I had to put something in, so I'm open to any suggestions.
I guess under program.
Those residents.
I do like that.
I like that.
I like that.
Yeah, that's right.
Jabbing the observer there, Jean. I was gonna, yeah, that's what Susan told me to do. Yeah, actually, I have under program, the second one under program, oh, I'm sorry. Is there a better way to put this thing, or do we even?
Well, it's not program.
Well, it doesn't have to, I could retitle it something else, I just.
There's a typo obviously, the first one. In, in the lead.
Yeah, Joan just pointed that out.
What prompted you to put the?
Faith?
The faith one in?
Well, maybe it had something to do with the fact that it's Good Friday, and I mean, it's Ash Wednesday, and I'm here, but no, I just, actually, I've heard a couple people, you know, the whole conversation around taking the Jewish holidays off and Eid and all that kind of stuff. That's all it was.
Okay.
But I don't, but I'm happy to take it off if someone's got a better one. I was gonna leave it blank, but I didn't want to, you know, come here at nine o'clock and say, anybody got a good question? So, I thought I'd give you some to poke holes at, if you'd like. But the one about the armed safety officer, I would be interested if there's a different way to ask that question.
Well, I was wondering, assisted in your.
I did.
How did you, I don't remember.
I, I used the school resource, armed school resource officer, if you want to use.
Just school resource officer?
Yeah. They call it SRO. You could put SRO in parentheses after it, if you want.
Have you gotten those results back yet, or no, the tabulated results?
Um, yeah, yeah, they're, I mean, they're still coming in, it's still open.
Oh, okay.
But I think I have about four hundred parent responses, and we're gonna do the student one this week, next week.
That's a very pointed question, is there, what are we, you know, which has a budgetary implication to potentially, right? Are we, are we wanting to know something broader, like are students safe, feel safe at CBU, or?
Well, remember, this is a community thing, so my thought, my thought was, do we want to gauge the community value around this? Which is why I put armed in there, right? I mean, that's, that's kind of the, the pointed question when it really gets down to it. Everybody wants their kids to be safe, and, you know, but I, if there's strong opposition to it, that's something we should at least know if we have to make a decision, or if it's.
If there's strong support for it, then we have to be ready to pay for it.
Right, yeah.
So.
But I don't know, I mean.
Well, not necessarily.
Not necessarily, right?
We have to be careful with this data.
Well, it's, what are you gonna do with any of the data? It just informs our decision making. It's the only opportunity we really have to get data from a broad spectrum of the community.
It's hard to ask a question like this, about putting it in some kind of context.
You'd have to take them all off, though.
Well, and I think the, the interesting that I, thing that I've noticed in the two surveys with, with staff and with parents so far, is in that question, I put similar question, but yes, no, and need more information. And I think, my memory serves me right, it's about thirty to forty percent who want more information.
I would support adding that as much as.
You know, so I think it leaves the door then open about, you know, to ask more questions and, and to define what that position might look like if there's an interest in knowing more about it.
Yeah, what about asking a question, though, that like, I believe that CBU is a, the safe place for our students? I mean, that's, you know, you're, that's a general question you're asking. I kind of like that question.
I do, too. I mean, that. You're not at CBU, right?
Pardon?
They're not?
Well, but it. No, but I think it's a gen, it's, it's an opinion, it's an opinion about the, the high school, you know, whether it's a safe place or not. I mean, I think it goes beyond, even if you don't have kids in school.
You guys want? So, what do I say? I'd say.
Are you asking for? I think you can have both of those options, and they get added.
That works, though. Might take the faith one off, put it in there.
In fact, I would get rid of the one about faith obligations, and put those two, and change the word program to.
School safety.
Yeah.
Culture.
And because I can't help myself, it makes me crazy that some of your captions have colons and some don't. Poor woman just did it last night.
I spent four freaking nights editing stuff for you, you can do this.
I still have to go in and fix it. Commas, for God's sake.
We'll keep the big comments all night.
Point of order, we are on Taliban, too. B.
Do the facilities, is that question imply that, about the turf field there, imply that one option is that we could do this without extra taxpayer money?
I feel very strongly that we're not gonna do it with any more funds than we could do the grass fields. I, I don't, I personally, I mean, it's a poor decision, but I, I don't feel comfortable asking the community for more money. I mean, that's what I'm hoping the fundraising will make up the difference. But that's, yeah, it does imply it, but that's kind of what I, how I presented it to the board in, in January, we always change that, but. If I, I thought if I put something about, I didn't want money to be the very first answer that they gave us, you know? I'm interested in the other answers.
I guess I, I personally would like to see it as long overdue, taken out, and it's either they support it or they don't. And what, what new information do you get by finding out that people think it's long overdue?
I was looking for enthusiasm.
Yeah.
The only thing about considering options to repair, we have the fundraising people having been given the go-ahead, if they can raise the money, we're doing it. So, we're more than considering it, from what I think. I don't know if that's a misleading.
Well, but to Jean's point, too, if they don't raise enough to cover that gap between grass fields and what the turf is going to cost, then we're not going to go ahead with the turf.
We're back to repairing.
We're back to the grass.
Yeah. So, she has covered both of those in the way she's worded, I think.
I think that several of these would benefit from having that third option of needs more information, because I think that speaks to what our community doesn't really know.
And that would actually help us out with those future articles. Yep.
But I think that program of the second question, the under facilities, if the cost to taxpayers, I think it's supposed to be were, if were, I think it's.
Now, it's.
After opinion, you need of, on, or about something, you need a.
Send me an email, whoever wants to be the person. I'm the numbers person, remember.
Do we, do we generally like?
Well, I think I got, I think I got the, the changes people would like.
Yes.
We'll take out the faith one, but change program to safety, I'll add that other one. I believe CBU is a safe place for, safe place, safe place for students?
For students.
And I'll add some needs more information.
Jean, you know the prompt on the back?
Yes.
Did, did that intend to be on the front, and then they could make comments on the back?
Yes.
Was that intended, okay, because that, that would, it seems to me that then you'd just have room, comments on the back, or, yeah.
Please, please, add a comment on the back.
Right. But I think that the statement should be on the front, because I think people aren't necessarily gonna flip it over, unless they get a prompt to flip it over.
I must may be stupid about this last one. Tell us about yourself, maybe in parentheses, put something about more than one.
Choice can be selected. You can choose more than one.
Choose all that apply.
Choose all that apply, something like that. Okay.
I'm a little nervous about first two questions under budget negotiations.
Those are recycled from a previous.
Are they? Both of them?
Yep.
Which one?
First two under budget negotiations.
I mean, you know, I really would like to, to open, you know, myself, but I could see from just a few comments in the last couple meetings that it might not be a point to push right now.
I mean, I guess if, if you got a fair number of comments from the community in care, or said no, then that might inform.
Why would?
I think that should, the contract negotiations work better in private, but.
Then, then if you have, if you have.
I got it.
Other suggestions for Jean, just, just email, but, but.
Especially commas and colons.
Yeah. It looks like we have the, that we're all comfortable with the concept.
And you need it by one, Jean, so that you can make sure it gets.
I think Jeff used to like, you know, give it to Sean and print it the day of, of the meeting, right? And we'd hand them out at the five o'clock at our, our annual meeting, so.
And then put some on the.
Put some at the.
Tables at the.
We used to put it at the town meeting, and then, yeah, and then at vote.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes.
The, we have our annual meeting coming up, the day before town meeting at five o'clock. I forget exactly what day it is.
On the fourth.
On the fourth, five o'clock. The, is there any more that we need to talk about for the annual meeting or the budget information meetings? Everyone set to go to their town meetings, except for Heinsberg, whose town meeting is after the vote? To go to your town meetings and do a presentation about our budget? Okay. Let's move on to action matters, then. Seven point one, can I have a motion to schedule the retreat date for Friday, May thirty-one?
The office can so move.
Second?
And we so move down the retreat date.
Yeah. Can we have a second?
A second.
The, the CSSU board already approved the retreat date for the CSSU meeting on the thirty-first.
Yes.
It would be set up with the individual boards meeting in the morning, and the CSSU meeting in the afternoon, and, and a lunch for everyone, even if you don't go to the CSSU meeting in between. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have adopted a meeting date. Does someone want to move approval of the wood chip bid?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's, materials were sent to us, is there any further discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor of approving the wood chip bid signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It has been approved. We were sent separately a tuition waiver request. Can I have a motion to approve the tuition waiver?
So move.
Second.
The, Sean, could you just give us about fifteen seconds of background?
So, I think the, the only out of the ordinary piece to this is that you can consider it provisional, because the student will also be applying through school choice. So, if they are accepted within the school choice program, then there would not be a tuition waiver that would be, would be required. But Elaine had been talking to this parent and suggested that they go ahead with the tuition waiver request at this point, because the family feels very, very adamantly that their student would be best served here and not, and not, not leaving CBU.
And this is consistent with our practice of allowing seniors to stay?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've approved the tuition waiver. We've already approved the new course proposal, so the next item is seven point five. Can I have a motion to approve the leave of absence request?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Sean, another 15 seconds?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. The administration, as I mentioned in my report, supports this request for leave of absence.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've approved the leave of absence request. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. I wonder how we do with lots of persistent...
Sandy, has it been moved and seconded? Yes.
Give me half, give me half.
Is there, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It appears to have passed, and we've approved the consent agenda. I'm going to let you confirm the next meeting dates. Before we do adjournment, first of all, I, we would have done this at the beginning of the meeting, but Alan wasn't here. I want to thank Alan. He's not going to be with us next year. The, and, and I suspect I'm speaking for all of us when I say how disappointed we are to lose someone like Alan from our board. But, but we wish you the best of luck, and we assume that when life gets a little easier with shuttling kids and things, that you'll be back here with us.
I will strongly consider it. Thank you. It's been, it's been a pleasure.
That's, that's, that's the only deal you get for being able to leave. Thanks again, Alan. The, a quick reminder, in, in March, we're going to be reorganizing this board. The, if anyone would like to run for chair, just let me know. I'd be, I'd be more than happy. The, the, I'm, I'm hoping that people will be thinking about whether they want to stay on their, on the committees to which they are, on which they are now sitting, and if they would, if they would let me know. The, and I'm assuming Leah wants to be the vice chair again, but...
So far, I can handle it.
Yes.
You're asking too much.
But if, but if, but if anyone wants to have a battle with Leah, we can do...
Sure. Susan, I think you're up for it.
Not a chance.
The, and seriously...
Policy can do it, more pay.
The committees to think about is, is they're clearly, because Alan's leaving us, there's going to be an opening on the Finance Committee, so...
Or two.
Or two. They're going to be, there may be two openings, so think about that. There, we have a very active Facilities Committee, but my guess is, is Polly and Jean would welcome another warm body to help them out. The...
No, we like being...
Yeah, we like being...
All right? In which case, none of you can do that. The, we, we have these ad hoc committees that kind of come in to be as needed, like for the flyer and the survey and stuff. And I won't be appointing anyone to those committees at that point.
Communications Committee now.
Yeah, we do have a Communications Committee.
We do.
And, and the, it was right here on my notes, and I just skipped right over it.
It's a well-oiled machine.
Yeah, it is, it is. And we need to appoint three members of the Chittenden South Supervisory Union. So if you're interested in that, think about that. The current members are Jean and Joan and myself. As, as much as I would love to not be on it, I'm not sure that that's an option. The, so it, so there, if, if anyone else is interested besides Jean and Joan, let us know, and, and we'll talk about these things. Although I think Jean wants to become Chair of the CSSU Committee.
Power hungry.
Yeah.
It's not how I'm easing into retirement, David. But I am vice chair. So if there's, if there is interest, if somebody really wants to be on the CSSU Board, we should know sooner rather than later, so that...
Yeah.
Because you may find yourself also being vice chair.
Yes, yes. The point to all of this is, is, is if you're interested in any of these things, communicate, please to me, and, and we'll sort out. If there's going to be some sort of voting thing about it, then we'll be set for it in March. But it's, it's nice to know ahead of time, so just let me know about those things. Did I, have I forgotten anything?
Our local staff's work.
The...
Local staff's work.
Uh, yes.
Is it two or three years?
Um...
Three years.
I don't think they will.
I think it's three years, three years.
No?
But I'll check next time I need.
And you're on the Outcomes Committee as well, are you not?
Pardon?
You're on CSSU, you're our representative to the Outcomes Committee. And Jean is the CSSU rep to the Outcomes Committee, so this is one where we actually get a little bit more of a voice in what's going on. I think that's it.
I got a few quick notes. First, just a reminder that the March reorganization, so that's an earlier start.
Yes.
CBU first, then CSSU, so five o'clock. Secondly, as you may have noticed, the Direction Center doors are now locked.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So please plan accordingly, and, and unless you want to take that longer walk, park closer to the, to the main offices there. And I have copies of the school newspaper called The Beat here, and it looks like there's also copies of the school report, if you would like them. Please take two if you'd like.
And flyers.
And flyers.
Can't leave without flyers. The, I think we're set. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've adjourned. Thank you, folks. I apologize that we're not...